Hey, we actually can call ourselves into session right on time at 7:05 PM. So let me go through the agenda here. So item number two, adjustments to the agenda. I'm not aware of any. Does anyone have anything they feel they need to call out of consent or otherwise?
Do you want to add to the executive session?
We already have a, we already have it, really.
I'd like to pull, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'd like to pull the personnel stuff out of the consent agenda.
Okay. So we'll take eight four out and put it into action matters as seven dot six. Okay. All right. Otherwise, let's continue. Item number three, audience and communications. I think we're pretty well covered there. So let's move along. Great. Item number four, presentations, kneecap assessments. Pass it over to you guys.
Is our math coordinator.
Welcome.
So you just, for those of you that were in the common topic, you just heard a lot about the kneecap scores across the CSSU. And we're going to focus and zero in now on Williston. So you can zero in a little more deeply on how we're doing. Although I will say, many, many of the trends, if you were in there that you heard about, are very applicable to what we're going to talk about as well. So, so first want to talk about how are kneecap scores used? So it's really important to consider kneecap scores as one data point when we are looking at individual student achievement. You never take just any one test, one assessment, whether it be a less formal or more formal as a kneecap, and, you know, say this, this represents this child. We always look for at least three. So that's one that I really want to make sure everyone realizes. So when parents do get their kneecap scores, as they should, and most students as they're older become really aware of them, they, they also need to know this is one, one piece of who they are as a learner. So with that said, we do use them in a lot of different ways. Program improvement being one, because we look for trends and we look at how we can improve and strengths and weaknesses over time, and that's very, very helpful to us. Identifying trends, comparing schools. We always like to look at how we did compared with CSSU with other schools in the state with similar demographics. It's also really helpful to compare to. The state as well. But this year, as you heard, because some schools are piloting the new S-Back, which comes into play for everyone next spring, we are not able to compare to the state because they pulled a chunk of schools out and those schools are actually, right now, taking the pilot S-Back. Examining achievement within demographic groups, this is a super important way that we use them because we really do look at our students that come from poverty, our students on IEPs, our students of different ethnicities, and we look at how those students are doing compared to the all group. So it brings a level of system accountability, which is, which is great. And then lastly, which we do examine specific children's achievement, but again, it's not in isolation. It's looking at other data points, and we have many that we pull into it and try to paint that picture, so.
I have one question.
Yes.
So I think it's wonderful that we don't use this as the sole measure of success for an individual student, but in terms of state funding, this is the one metric that allows funding to be removed or released. Is that right or no?
Not so much funding. I mean, this is how we get identified as making or not making adequately yearly progress. So that's the federal no child left behind law. There is some level of monetary pieces associated with it if you're a Title I school in particular, which we are, but it's not a huge, huge, significant amount. Do you have to, we have to set aside some money if we're, as a Title I school for parents to access outside tutoring if their students aren't meeting the standards and they fall into a couple of those subgroups. We're going to just kind of pop up and down.
Yep, we're going to, our, our goal for tonight is to make this more interactive so that you're, since you just sat through an hour of people talking at you, that we're hoping to get you talking to each other and talking with us and asking questions and looking at some different things that maybe you haven't seen before. So please do interrupt if you have questions and, and we're actually going to have you do a little, a little structured math talk in a little bit here. But one of the things that we thought might be good for you to see is what does V-CAP actually look like? So you've heard a lot about V-CAP and it, and that we use it as a tool to look at assessments. This is an actual screenshot of V-CAP. So if a teacher were to go look at her class, and this is an actual third grade class from WCS, and I wanted to show this for a couple of reasons. One, just to give you that view of here's what this looks like in our program V-CAP, but also to, to show you that if you were a classroom teacher and you were wanting to look at your class data of, you know, how are my kids doing, this is what you'd see. So on the right side, on the left side is the kneecap scores for this group. This is a homeroom class of third graders. And then on the right side is the number corner checkup. So the number corner checkup is a classroom-based, but actually given CSSU-wide Bridges assessment based on the instruction that was just provided for those kids. And this class I picked in particular because it mirrors the results in math that we got. So about seventy-three percent of the kids in this class achieved the standard for, or were proficient or above on the math kneecap. So then, as a classroom teacher, I would be looking at this and saying, so let me think about who are my fours on the kneecap and am I doing enough to enrich their math world and what are they really talented at?
Those are with distinction, kids proficient with distinction.
Right. Those are the students with distinction. And then I'd be looking at who, which kids got ones and what are we doing for those kids? In this particular case, the child who has a one on both the classroom-based assessment and the kneecap is on an IEP and he does have math goals. So he's a kid who's on the radar, who has goals that we're working on. The twos, if I, I would also be thinking about, so who are those kids that are in the nearly category? So they almost achieved the standard, but they, they didn't? And again, I think teachers are mostly using the kneecap as sort of a screener to say, this, I might need to look more carefully at this kid. Not to say like, oh, I can look at the kneecap results and figure out exactly what needs to happen for this kid in math, but I can look at this and say, okay, so that kid got a two on the kneecap, let me look into his classroom performance, let me look into the other assessments that I'm doing, you know, on a, on a daily basis, on a weekly basis, and see how things are going. And this class I actually know quite a bit about because I serve, all the kids who are twos are actually kids who we worked with in summer school, in the little, in the third grade summer school group last summer, and, which I happened to co-teach with another teacher. So as a teacher, I think part of the concern is, am I, are we meeting these kids' needs or what? Do we know that they have needs and what, are we helping, are we starting to figure out what those needs are and trying to address them? And so that kind of enables us to do that. So that's just a little, little summary in the math world of what some of those assessments might look like. And you can actually put like twelve different assessments up on one screen.
Yeah, and look across.
I put two just partially so we could see it a little more easily, but the next slide, you'll see a reading.
It is a great tool.
So, yeah, so this is a fifth grade screenshot of V-CAP. And you'll notice the DRP, I don't know if any of you have a V-CAP student.
Degrees of.
DRP, the degrees of reading proficiency. And you'll see the, the stay nine, and then you'll see the proficiency level. So they've broken it down into one, two, three, and four. And then on the right, you'll see the kneecap reading scores for grade five, for this class of students. And again, like what Caitlin said, we would take a look at the ones, what's happening with those ones on the DRP. Again, are you all familiar with the DRP? It is a standards, it's a standardized assessment. Kids have to read these nonfiction passages. It's kind of a closed reading where a word is, is omitted and they have to put in, they have to circle the right word that needs to go in there. So it's a, it's a reading comprehension test, and it's done whole class. And it's a great sort of quick screening of how kids are navigating nonfiction text. And it's highly correlated to how they're doing in reading overall. So again, we would look at those, the ones. And in this, this student who got a one, got a two on the kneecap reading. And you'll see this score, thirty-eight, that's right near the, it's near forty. Forty is the cutoff. So if you, if you scored a forty, you were in the proficient range. So we don't know what happened with him on his DRP, but that is a red flag and it's somebody that comes up with data tanks and we'll talk about it. And same with the fours, you can see it's pretty correlated there. And you would look at these twos and, and the conversation would really be, okay, so what are we doing for tier-two support for this kid? How can we get this kid to perform at a higher level?
Student nine, four, three, two, looks like a huge disparity.
Student nine.
Yes, yeah.
How would you go about addressing that?
So the last one. So that's where I get back to having three data points to look at. So this clearly to me would be like, we need another data point to see what's going on. What this would do is it would trigger us to do another reading assessment that's a more diagnostic one called the BAST, Benchmark Assessment System. And that would give us much, much more in-depth data about that student. And we would then know, was it just, they took it the third day of school coming off of summer break? That's when they took the DRP and maybe, you know, it was more about transitioning into school because then in October, this student took the kneecap and ended up scoring proficient. So was it just a coming off summer break issue or is it, is it really there's some instructional weaknesses we have to work on? But that third data point that's more diagnostic would be what informs us there.
And the same thing happens with the kneecap where sometimes kids do not do it well on the kneecap. And we'll get, because we get these kneecap scores in March, we'll have, we'll get kneecap scores and be like, this kid got a one on the kneecap? This, he's been doing great in class all the long. So he's not a kid that we're going to focus on because we know that that was a fluke or it was, you know, that piece. And I think part of our goal is, and although you have numbers to keep it confidential, is to really take this down to, what really matters is the kids and what are we doing for those kids? And so we can look at numbers and we can look at trends and all those things, but ultimately we have to get down to the student level of who are the kids that are struggling? What are we doing for them to help them move into a different place? And I, I think Carol's point about the cut score is a good one too, that, you know, there's a range of scores. So there are kids who are in that nearly band who almost, like are really close, and then there are kids who are not as close. So that's something that we start to look at too of like, well, how far off is this kid or, you know, did he, is he really someone struggling? And I think with our, even with our special ed populations, they, a child may make, may make growth but still be in the same band. So that's something we need to think about too.
Also, if you look at kids who have a forty or a forty-one, that, that's standard error measurement, you know, it's plus or minus too. So that whole band of kids, we.
Right. A lot of good times to think about the standard, yeah. Okay. Okay, so now we're going to have, this is the interactive portion. Let's go. Okay, before, in front of you, you have a, a pink sheet that says listen and compare. And this is a protocol that we use with students as early as kindergarten and all the way up through eighth grade to get kids to talk equitably. So it's a chance for kids to think about things on their own and then talk to each other about their thinking so that everybody gets a chance to have their say and, and share their ideas. Usually it works a little better with adults because adults are, already pretty much talk equitably, but we'll take you through it just so you can get a sense of, of this protocol and how it works. So the first thing is that you have to have some private reasoning time or private think time, some people call it, which means you take some time to think quietly to yourself about this question and.
And part of that is you can jot down notes to yourself. It isn't just total mental thinking. You can actually jot down some things.
You can actually write some things down. And then you're going, we're going to discuss this in a kind of structured way. So what we'd like you to do is to look at these two photographs, and one is of a student, these are our actual Williston students who are in, who are in fourth grade. So one is of a student working on a math kneecap item, and the other one is a picture of two students who are talking about their math thinking and their teacher is standing behind, thank you. That's much better. Their teacher is standing behind them, listening to their thinking and observing what they're saying and doing. So take a little bit of private reasoning time to think about your observations about the two photos. Think about the context of this, of thinking about assessment. Anybody need more time? Okay, so we're going to partner up Giovanna and Josh and Kevin and Deb and Kevin and Cindy. We're going to make you do some work here. Okay? Because we need a partner.
Okay.
So I'm going to ask you to talk with a partner and first of all, pick a partner A. So decide who wants to be partner A.
Sure.
You'd be?
I'd be A or B.
I don't know. Who do you want to be?
I'll be A.
Okay. Nice job figuring that out. Okay. So the way this protocol works is that partner A is going to explain his or her thinking first. Partner B, you're listening to understand, so you're thinking about what your partner is saying, but you're not interrupting, you're just listening. And then you're, and then I'm going to say, finish with that and switch roles and the opposite thing's going to happen. So the other person's going to say what they're thinking while you, the other person listens. And then at the end, you're going to discuss how your ideas are the same and different. I'm going to be walking around and listening in on your conversations, so don't be alarmed if I walk up behind you and I'm kind of hovering over you. I'm just trying to hear what you're saying because I am listening for certain ideas that might come out that I want to have shared with the whole group. So any questions about what we're doing? Okay, so partner A, go ahead and start talking to your partner about what you, what you have noticed.
About the pictures. About the pictures and what, what you think is happening on there.
I'm wondering why student one is up.
Well, I believe that's the first picture, so picture one and two, right, left to right. He's working on private thinking time, whereas picture two, students are sharing their thoughts and the teacher is behind them in a listening mode.
Okay. I hear you and I understand.
Okay, finish your thought.
All right.
Okay, and part, partner B, would you explain your ideas and partner A, you are listening?
It looks like in picture one, you have a student also engaged in private thinking time. Since the caption says a student working on math, I would deduce that they're doing math with the best in math. And then in picture two, I think the caption also accurately reflects the picture, two students talking about their math thinking with their teacher.
We are thinking.
But I wasn't there, so I really don't know.
Good inference, based on the information provided.
And I think, I guess, the piece that I liked, you talked as a whole.
Perhaps preparing for the test.
Okay.
Now, do you want to discuss how the ideas are the same?
And then you can talk about how your ideas are the same and how they're different.
I think we have pretty much the same ideas.
But ultimately, that's where you might end up.
And you said it better, but I think we both agree that looked more interactive and more.
Yeah, like some co-teaching going on. Because of the age discrepancies, I think that also makes me think that she's older than the student.
I hadn't picked up on that.
She just seems taller.
Yeah, she does.
Or more mature. Whereas he's kind of down and, you know, he's kind of, he's definitely not, he's participating but in a, in a passive way rather than.
He looks more uncomfortable, yeah.
She is more forward and leaning and, you know, doing something with her papers, so.
Okay, so I'm going to let you finish your discussion, I'm going to ask certain people to share, but I'll give you a little forewarning. So can you share about the productive work?
You didn't really disagree on anything.
Sure.
And hold on, it's not yet, not yet, not a second. So I'm going to have you share about the place up there.
Oh, okay.
Okay, okay. So now.
I know, I know.
So you all had some excellent conversations and some of your ideas were the same, some were different. There's some certain ideas that I want to make sure that everybody has a chance to hear, so I've asked some people to share. And one, part of what we do when we do this is we ask people to share in a certain order, perhaps, if we want it to come out in a certain sequence. So I think we will start with Kevin Broche. Will you share what you thought about the picture of this young man who's at the table there?
So the, between the two scenarios, the boy who's alone appears to be lonely.
Kevin kind of said he doesn't look like he's having as much fun, which kind of leads into what Deb was talking about. Deb, what did you think about those two kids who are talking together and working together?
Just that they're sharing different ideas and bringing up new questions and it's kind of cementing the knowledge because they're being verbal as opposed to just pencil, paper.
Yep. And then Josh pointed out that.
Both students seem to be engaged, or both pictures reflect students engaged in studious and productive work.
Yes, and of course, they did know that they were going to be on a school board presentation, so they're trying to show productivity, but having said that, I, I think part of the point of doing this was, was to show that, you know what, there are lots of different kinds of assessments. And there is a time and a place for pencil, paper, sitting by yourself assessment. There's times that there are things that that works for and that we need to use that for, but even something like two kids working on math together while their teacher's listening and taking notes and while those two kids are sharing ideas and coming up with new ideas is also an assessment. That's another broader way of looking at assessment. And they are both valuable for different reasons, so that's kind of, that's the point of our discussion.
And what you just experienced is one of the, one of the techniques we use regularly in our mathematics classrooms, but it's also spilling over to be used in a lot of other content areas. And when the teacher is planning the lesson, the teacher's anticipating the ideas that might come out, what ideas are going to move the learning forward? And that's called selecting and sequencing, which is what Caitlin was doing. Like how do you get to what you're looking for in terms of moving the learning forward based on what you're hearing from the kids? But you want every child to have a chance to talk to somebody and engage with it. So really powerful practice. Okay, so now we're going to do our overview of the Williston kneecap results. Reading, it takes place grades three through eight. Writing, grades five and eight. Math, grades three through eight. And science, grades four and eight. So that's sort of where, when kneecap happens. This first slide, you're looking at all the, all of those areas. You're looking first at reading, then math, writing fifth grade, writing eighth grade, science fourth and science eighth. And you can look at this and you can clearly say like, wow, you can look, you can see reading, we're doing really well, and you might go, whoa, eighth grade science, what's that about? But unless you really look historically at each one of these, you can't really tell if we made growth, have we gone forward, have we gone backwards? What's the, what's the story in here? You can see though, across that we have, you know, a lot of kids performing at proficiency, a decent number in everything but science, performing, you know, having some at the distinguished level. And that we also have, you know, a, a pretty sizable group that's in that lighter blue that are nearly proficient kids. And then that darker green is the, the lowest category, the category which we're really trying to move kids out of. But unless we look at, you know, under these, we can't really tell how does it compare to what we, where we've been? What's the, what's the journey? So historically, what you really need to know is the overwhelming majority of Williston students perform above the state average on the kneecaps. The two subgroups that we continue to focus on, which were identified for, for AYP purposes of, is students from poverty and students on IEPs. And, and that's true everywhere. Those are the subgroups though that we've been working on, focusing on, trying to figure out how do we help move their learning forward? You know, so it's, so they're closing that gap. We use a continuous improvement model across our school. And what that means for continuous improvement to us is that we use data-driven decision-making. So we look at the data, some of the data you've seen and other data in terms of how kids are performing to decide what intervention they need or how do they move their learning forward? We use current research across education. We look at that research and try to embed those best practices across all instruction. And we have ongoing embedded professional development, which you all know that we've started that process most deeply with mathematics. We'll talk this year about how it's gone in science because there was money allocated to that. And reading, we really haven't had to take that route because our scores have been consistently high and it's been more of tweaking and moving us forward with tweaks versus a whole professional development format. We also want to make sure everyone's clear that when you're looking at this kneecap data that three percent is, is the significantly significant number that we look for. If it's less than three percent, then, you know, and we don't get too excited, we're looking for that, that three-year trend in general and having it be greater than three percent so we can actually say, you know, this is not just a group of kids, but it's really something within our program that we're either glad about or concerned about.
Which is really due to the whole margin of error piece of that if, it's, could be a two percent increase or decrease could just be the margin of error on the test. So that's why it's not as alarming because.
So we're going to dive into those and look behind each of those now with you so you can get a sense of it, starting with reading. And Carol's going to jump in here.
Then I'll just, you know, kind of what Jackie said about our reading scores. Our reading scores historically have been pretty consistent. What you, what I do see, it's.
They're pretty consistent over time. We don't have too much variability in this. That's about it.
So the group, you know, the eighty percent proficiency, that other twenty percent, if you think about students on IEPs and students from poverty, by and large, that's, that's that other group that we're seeing there. That's the group that we really have to zero in on.
But when you disaggregate the data and when you really look at, you know, underneath what the, underneath those scores, what we find is that, okay, so eighty-two percent of all kids, you know, are proficient. It's consistent over the past five years. If you look at the IEP kids, forty-two percent of them are proficient, which is an eight percent increase over the past three years. And that reflects some attention to.
Can I just jump in? The middle school was recognized for that achievement in particular this year by one of a, one of the professional development organizations for literacy in the state.
And our kids of low SES status, sixty-two percent of them were proficient, which reflects a thirteen percent increase over the past five years. That's really significant. I mean, that does reflect a whole lot of energy and time and resources and attention has gone into looking at those kids and what's going on. And I know there was a conversation about poverty in the last meeting and what are we doing about poverty? And it's, it's, it's a tough one because I was just doing a, I'm going to write an article for the Bell on summer reading and the importance of summer reading. And this one researcher said, you know, kids who are low SES or kids in poverty usually make greater gains during the school year in reading than their peers, their counterparts. And then they drop off significantly over the summer, so they have all that time, stuff that they have to make up. So what we're trying, trying to do is reach all parents and say how important summer reading is, and we just can't afford to have that loss of achievement. Yeah?
So, and these, these seem like great numbers. Eighty-two percent above, across the board, consistent, correct?
Yes.
And IEP folks have gone up eight percent over the last three years. SES folks have gone up thirteen percent over the last five years, correct? So if our bottom tiers, if you will, are moving up and overall we're staying the same, there must be a demographic that's not doing as well in order to keep it consistent. What, what's the missing piece here?
Yeah, that's a good thought.
That is a good thought. I, I think part of what we've been looking at too is maintaining that balance of you start focusing on, we've had our focus groups on SES and IEP for a number of years and making sure that the focus still stays on the tier one of, for all kids too, because I think sometimes when your attention gets put onto a specific group, you lose sight of that group. So I think that's, that's an area we're still working on is making sure all those kids are.
The other thing that we need to look at is the SES student population has doubled since the beginning of this test. It's a bigger part now of the population. It started at nine percent. We're pushing nineteen percent now.
Okay, that's a very good point.
So that's impacting what's going on. That tells you about the economy and what's going on.
But we would have to really look at a specific kids, I think, to answer the question, Josh, that you're getting at. But I think that's an interesting question to look at. So what, you know, what is it?
I would be a skeptic, but we've got great increases in the two bottom groups, but we haven't done anything in the top group. So.
Oh, we lump proficient and proficient with distinction together.
It should say proficient or above, sorry.
Well, I'm saying our proficiency level should be, that's a flat number. So we're not making gains. We're making strides in other places. That's awesome. But let's not sit on a number and be happy with it when 82% is not necessarily the best. 100% is the best, right? You know, so why not shoot for the moon? And, you know, so I just didn't want that, the fact that we haven't made any gains in there not get addressed because.
Right. And that's always, I mean, I think, and you'll see in math, 2% of the scores have been flat over a number of years. And that's always a question, how do we get them to move?
Right, yes.
That's why we're all here.
I don't think so. Next one. Here we have writing. This is grade five writing over time. And you'll see that the results go up and down and up and down. And it really depends on the year, it depends on the test, it depends on what they're asking them to do. It's a very, very difficult test. I do think because we have implemented Writer's Workshop in a pretty intentional way in the early grades, we have a big focus on writing, we're starting to move up a little bit here, which is really exciting. And I know Molly kept saying, we have to celebrate fifth grade writing. And I think we do. I mean, this really is evidence of instruction. I can honestly say that. So.
Yeah, I mean, hope over the next, you know, we'd like to see that three-year trend. That's one year where we've gone up. I mean, we know we've had a ton of PD, we know we've had it as an area of focus, but we have to see how we do next year and the year after to really be able to tell, did we, programmatically is our theory correct?
And I recall 2009 was a skip year because they redid the test.
Yes.
Yes.
So you came in, so you can't even really compare '05 to '08 with 10 through 13 in a sense.
But it's certainly really a great.
Well, it's trending in the right direction for sure.
It's a great, I mean, given how hard teachers have worked and everyone's worked, it's a great result to see. But it's one year, so we've got to keep it, keep it going.
And you think you can identify what that is? You think it's been the Writer's Workshop that you've been working?
It's been all the, it's been the, it's been the Writer's Workshop, it's been mapping out the writing curriculum and having it be consistent and having teams work on units together. It's been.
Collaborative scoring.
Collaborative scoring. Yeah, we have some really concrete things we've done that we believe are making the difference, that are all in that slide that Molly showed about, here's what the research says makes a difference and moves learning forward.
And we are very vigorously implementing the Common Core. And this year, we spent a lot of time on the writing. And there are three main genres now. And the kids are really getting way more skilled at writing. And it's the narrative, the informational, and then the persuasive or opinion. And those are the three major areas that we're, in terms of genre. And then we also focus on the craft of writing. So I think that we're getting there. Now, here's eighth grade writing. Went down a little bit since 2012. This year, they were required to write a persuasive piece, a response to informational text, write a report about visiting Boston, write a response to literary text, and then they had to write a response to informational text using an opinion format and details from this text to support the opinion. So it was a pretty extensive test. And so those were.
That's for kneecap?
That's for kneecap, yeah.
And is that different than in 2012? I mean, didn't they have the same?
What they had to write about, yes, is different.
The criteria was the same to be measured against, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we never know which of the genres they're going to do the main focus on. And so it's a little tricky. And it's a different group of kids each year, obviously. So it makes it, it's why you really have to look for that, for that overtime trend. Because it's really, it's a hard one to tease out because.
I totally understand. You can't, you can't measure your effective efforts over the last few years on this, on the 2013 number alone. But it's concerning, you know.
It is. No, it's definitely the one that we kind of went, huh, that's usually not an area that we would expect. That's not where we would expect to see that, a drop.
Well, if you look at the data, the way it trends, it's just up and down. It's variable. There's really no trend to it, you know. It's just kind of, it's everywhere, you know. So, you know, this is a, this is a difficult thing to do, you know. I mean, it's, there's so many different variables. And so you have to take everything with a grain of salt, like you guys are saying, and figure out what your significant difference is, and then trend it and see what happens. And try and identify what programs are working, what programs aren't. Take the programs that are out that you don't think are so that there's more time for the programs that are working and just do your best and take these as they are. You know, it's a tall task.
I mean, we do learn from it every year. We dive into the release task. We look at what the kids were asked to do. We look at how they performed in each of the different.
So will this trigger anything at this point? Or will you just kind of, you know, see what you've done in the younger groups and just see what happens? Or are you going to address that in any way?
Well, the main, the main thing, because Common Core, this was before full implementation of Common Core. And so the genres have been repackaged lately. I won't say they're vastly different, but they have been repackaged. And so we're now, you know, our instructions focused on what that repackaged curriculum is.
Yeah, so we're going to change it anyway.
So we're in a PD stage. The other thing we have, which is interesting, is, you know, we have two on-demand data points each year where kids do an on-demand writing piece that is similar, not as in-depth, but similar to what the kneecap does. So we can compare those data points per kid with their kneecap writing and look at, are they consistent or not? To see is, you know, did, you know, was there a drop just on the kneecap? Or were they low across the board as we look at those on-demand prompts as well?
All right, so when we look, when we dug deeper, well, like we showed earlier, all fifth grade writing, 67% were proficient or above, which is a 21% increase since 2011. Now, again, it's a different group of kids, but I do feel pretty proud that we put a lot of work into that. All eighth grade writing, 66% were proficient or above, and that is a decrease. IEP, fifth grade writing, 28% proficient. It's an increase of 21% since 2011. It's got, it's got to be reflective of some very hard work. And IEP, eighth grade writing, 25% proficient or above, 17% increase over the last six years. So kind of gone up. SES, kids of low SES standing in fifth grade, 54% were proficient or above. That's a 13% increase. And then the low SES kids in eighth grade, 36.
And that's just been all of them, Matt?
That's just been.
Why don't you track them every year? Do you track them every year and see how each class is doing every year?
The same group as you?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, we have, yes.
I mean, I think that data would be much more helpful.
So that's the.
It's the cohort data.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did it.
We can do it in reading. We don't, we don't have a high-stakes test in writing.
It only happens at those two grade levels, so you can't do it like what are the eighth grade because they weren't.
But they do follow the kids in the high school and start showing that cohort data because they've got the data points to show it. You can see it in the other presentation. It's a good point.
Okay. So what you need to know, we're supporting classroom-level instruction, really focused on tier one, best first instruction. We coach, I'm involved in doing some coaching with classroom teachers. We have pretty high-functioning data teams, so we use data-driven decision-making around instruction. We have curriculum coordination and alignment, especially now with the implementation of Lucy Cawkins' units of study in writing K through five. We're still trying to figure out what program we're going to have in place for six, seven, and eight, but that will happen. We have an intentional focus on vocabulary instruction across the curriculum. If you go into any room, any classroom in Williston, you'll see a word wall of some sort, whether it's tier one words, whether it's tier three words, tier two words, content, concept. Let's see, we have the ELA Common Core Professional Development. That was all the Lucy Cawkins' work we did this year. Collaborative scoring of writing twice a year. Increasing use of nonfiction text. That's been very intentional because that's a real emphasis in the Common Core. And intentional teaching of close reading strategies with complex texts. That's a Common Core-ism. Complex text just means having more sophisticated texts available for all our students and helping them navigate those kinds of more sophisticated texts. So we have additional supports for struggling learners. We have differentiated instruction in and out of the classroom and use of informative assessment for ongoing progress model. So again, professional development with our state's Common Core, focus on vocabulary instruction, the writing curriculum, greater emphasis on integration of technology. And this has been a big push at Williston. And I do thank Walter for his vision around this. This is everywhere in Williston now. Teaching of close reading strategies, very critical skill in incorporating more complex texts. So that's what we're doing. Any questions about this?
Caitlin's going to jump into math.
Yes. Okay. So as we already talked about, the trend in math is that it stays pretty much the same. We did go down a little bit this year, but there's still been that less than 3% change. So statistically, not too, not too significant, although it did make me wonder if other schools were also kind of going down a little bit this year. And so I did a little bit of on-the-side data research to look at some comparable schools around the state because we don't have that state comparison data. And the one that I found was sort of closest to us in terms of numbers of students and numbers of free reduced lunch and all those things was Colchester. And they actually went down 3%. And then schools in CSSU also did go down in math. So that made me feel a little bit better about the fact that we went down a little, a little bit in math, but still kind of wondering why is that? Why is it happening that we continue to go down a little bit, a little bit, a little bit in math? And I think that part of what that has to do with is that we've had a lot of activity in math and the things that we've been doing in math in terms of professional development, in terms of new programs, in terms of the Common Core coming online. And something that's a little different about the way that the math professional development has happened is that because of the way it was introduced, everyone didn't do it at the same time. So we're still in a place where all of our teachers haven't been trained in best practices. People are at different degrees of implementation of best practices. And kids are kind of coming through our school where some, some kids have had a teacher trained in best practices all the way through and others have not because the teacher may not have done that professional development yet. So I wonder about the impact of that on how kids are, what happened? How kids are, how kids are performing is, if that has something to do with the fact that we're really not at full implementation of best practices even yet because we don't have all those teachers having gone through three years, partially because we have so many math teachers in our district. We have about 60 people who teach math. So it takes a while to get there. Are we going to get back on track here?
I don't know.
Okay.
I have a question.
Let me refer to my, yes, go ahead.
So, so the chart has all three, three, all grades together in this chart.
Correct, yes.
So when you break down by grade.
It differs. So some grades are more successful than others.
And so which, which, because we don't have that here.
Um, I cannot tell you that off the top of my head, but I can look it up for you and tell you if you want to know which ones are.
And I'm particularly, yeah, I'm particularly interested because, and I don't even know if it really applies, because we were talking in the CSSU common topic.
Yeah.
About math bridges and how important it is because it's very algebraic.
Yes, yeah.
In nature. I don't think any of these grades have really yet seen the impact of that, right?
The effect of the algebra. You're right. Right. So this, so this year, this school year, we adopted the Common Core aligned bridges addition to for grades K through two. And also the middle-level Common Core aligned program, CMP three. But our three, five teachers are still using GE aligned, sort of the first edition of bridges because it wasn't available yet. So it'll be available for next year. But you're right, part of this, this whole math piece and even the piece about kids being successful in algebra in eighth grade builds upon kids developing that conceptual knowledge of algebra, starting actually really in preschool and going all the way up through eighth grade. And the kids who are eighth graders now haven't had that, or even the kids who are in fifth grade now haven't had that.
Even third graders, really, right?
Yeah, yeah, to some extent. I mean, there was definitely some algebra in the previous edition of bridges, but definitely more of an emphasis now on it. So, yeah, so that's, and I think that kind of piece is what makes this a little bit gray in terms of how the scores are changing or not changing because there's, there are things like that that are taking years to kind of progress through before kids get to that point. All right, well, they're trying to figure that out.
We're getting there.
Okay.
So if I may observe, and I really appreciate the explanation, because when I look at the data, I come back with a different conclusion.
Okay.
And I realize this is gross data and you don't want to get too hung up on data points. But if you look at the trend line, starting back from 2005, and assuming 3% is statistically significant.
Right.
You know, we were doing 79, 80 plus year after year. Then come 2009, about the time when the change in curriculum occurred, if I understand it, we're seeing a glide path that's downward.
Which is actually pretty typical of, it's called an implementation dip. So when you start a new program, you, you often do see scores go down. So actually, in some ways, you could think about the fact that, well, not only do we change programs, we totally reconfigured our entire school district and changed grade levels and moved grades to different buildings. We, you know, we've adopted best practices, which is a different pedagogy for teaching math. So we've had, so that, it's actually pretty typical for a dip to a car when that happens.
But this is a three-year trend line. It's not necessarily a dip, at least from where I'm looking at the numbers. So I guess, you know, we, as a board, with faculty as a community, looked at science a couple of years ago and saw trends that were a little bit disconcerting. And I'm not saying that this is as acute as science was, but I'm beginning to wonder whether the trend line is really, this isn't just a dip of, you know, these one-time factors of change and over, but we're on a glide path that's in the wrong direction.
Yep. I think it's a valid concern, but I do also think that part of it is, it's not one change, it's multiple changes happening over multiple years. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, I feel like because of the way that professional development has been implemented in math and because of the way even programs have changed, like, we changed programs at one grade level but not another. So now we've got two years where, okay, we changed, we've got the dip that might occur from the changing this thing, but now we have another change and another change. So I'm, I don't know. I mean, I think, yes, we should definitely look at that. But I also feel like if we actually charted all the different changes at different grade levels, we would kind of, we'd see that there's a lot of changes. And it's hard to judge when that impact impacted the scores, I guess, in some ways, right? So just changing your K2 program impacted the scores for the third graders that next year or two, two to three years down the road, you know? So it's, it's a good question, a good thing to think about.
Caitlin, is this a slide?
Um, yeah. You can go to that one. Okay. So, um, let's go to that one. And so a lot of the things on here are things that are not new things, that you know that we've already been doing, the whole best practices in teaching math, professional development. We talked about data teams. We're still looking at research and thinking about effectiveness and how it all fits in. And opinions seem to change about that as time goes on. But having consistent programs and now next year, having everybody using Common Core programs should help. And then we do provide intervention enrichment for kids at all grade levels. And we're using those formative assessments and working on our classroom practices to support equity.
I'm sorry, what is CMP? I forget.
CMP is Connected Math, which is our middle-level program. So, it's six through eight.
Six, seven, eight.
Yeah.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Six, seven, eight. It's called Connected Math.
Connected Math.
It's actually called the Connected Math Project, but everybody thinks it's the Connected Math Program. So, just call it Connected Math, and then they'll be...
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, and we, right now, use CMP three. It's the third edition of Connected Math. Okay, so, because we've been sitting here for a long time and not having a lot of activity, we're gonna do another little activity, which is, your job right now is to take some quite reasoning time and look at this list and think about which of these things have we been doing for a while and are we still doing, and which is a new thing that we're doing this year, or we're planning to do in the future, I should say, not really this year, it's actually next year. And then, turn and talk to the person next to you about what's the new thing and what are the things that we are continuing to do. So, turn and talk to me, just turn next to us.
Turn and talk to Kevin.
Turn, tell them what you're talking about.
You're talking to Kevin.
You said you know what it is. What's the new thing? What's the thing that we're still working on?
What's that?
Okay. Cindy, you want to share what you think the new thing is?
Bridges three-five.
Bridges three-five. So, as you can see from the word "continue," all those things are things that we're continuing to work on. But Bridges third through fifth. This addition to Bridges for third through fifth grade is just being, they just finished writing it, and our teachers are gonna be using it next year, so they'll be training, actually happening this summer to prepare people to do that. And then, next year, all of our grade levels will be using Common Core aligned math programs.
There are more kneecaps, right?
Correct, great. Any questions, other questions or comments about math before we move on?
I have a question.
Yes.
You know, we were talking about looking at the scores and implementation dip. How long does it take a teacher, because they're gonna have a different addition?
Yeah.
How long does it take a teacher to get up to speed so they know that addition really well and it's like, becomes common practice and they don't even have to really think about it, to get to that level of proficiency?
So, having been a classroom teacher, I would say probably three years.
So, just a different addition?
Yeah. Well, if it's enough of a change, and these new additions are probably enough of a change...
Because they're Common Corps, they're moving to Common Core.
The middle-level, the middle-level program CMP is not as much of a shift as the Bridges has been. So, I think CMP-wise, middle-level, I'd say that's more of a two-year to get the people, but I think the Bridges is gonna take people. I think the first year, you're trying to just get through and see what the changes are and make it happen. The second year, you're pretty good and you're honing your skills, and by the third year, you're probably doing a great job of teaching.
And what level do we just change?
We just changed K-two.
And I think, what did we find out when we changed that? Because I think, you know, we anticipated how much time it would take to make that change, and how did that match up against what really happened?
What really happened? It did not match up. But it, and actually, interesting that the creators of the site of addition of Bridges said they didn't think it was gonna be as much of a transition, and when we really started using it with our teachers, we realized that it actually was much more of a transition than we thought it was gonna be, to the point that we actually changed our professional development plan to have some additional time to work with teachers because it was just so different than they thought it was gonna be. And it's interesting, too, when you start a new addition, in some ways, it's harder if you have taught the previous addition because they take activities that you've taught before, but they tweak them. So, they're not, you think, oh, this is about this, oh, I've done this game before, and then you find out, well, actually, no, it's, there's a different version of this. It might be called the same thing, but it's a different version, and I almost feel like that kind of adjustment is a little bit harder than, you know, in addition to the fact that we're pushing on people to use all these best practices, so they're not only implementing a new program, they're also implementing best practices. And for some teachers, they're doing, they're new teachers doing both of those things in the same year. So, there's a lot, a lot going on, for sure.
My sense is, this is the last time that we're buying different, different programs.
I certainly hope so.
So that, for the next few years, we'll be using the same program where people become much better at using it and understanding how it works. And I think that's what happens when you change, though. It's like trying a new sport or doing something different. You're not gonna be as good as you are after you practice for a while and really practice and kind of look at what works, what doesn't work, and you're gonna fail sometimes and then get better at it, and that's kind of what teaching is about also. It's like really trying to use new programs, new techniques, and you're not an expert in the beginning, and it takes practice. And how many times do you do, I mean, just last thing, I'll say, how many times do you teach maybe subtraction during this program? Maybe once that year, you know, before you go back to it the next year and say, gee, I remember I did this last year. Here's my second chance at doing that with my class now. But it's only your second chance. It's not like you've done it 100 times. So, that's what happens. It takes a little bit of time to become an expert at the new program and to get really fluent with it so that you do it automatically. You don't even have to think about it, you just know it.
But I do want to assure you that, I mean, I think the first year of implementation, people are doing a good job of implementing it. The second year, they're better, and the third year, they're actually great at it. So, I don't, I don't want to give the impression that, well, your teacher's new program and they do not know what they're doing for the first year. I mean, we do a lot of up-front professional development and a lot of support throughout the year, so I think people are doing a good job, but as Walter said, it's a learning curve. It's, you've gotta learn the program, it takes time. Anything that you've taught once, you're probably likely to do a better job on it the second.
Well, the difference is gonna be where your energy is going. If I just have to study this program to make sure I can bring it in at the bottom line, kind of like make sure I'm doing it the way it's supposed to be?
Yeah.
That's the emphasis in the beginning. At the end, I can really tweak it and take it to the level it should be because I really understand the program now.
Yeah.
And I've used it enough that I'm really an expert with it.
That's a great point.
Well, I think we need to just keep in mind that we did have students in classrooms and stuff, and then we bought into Bridges.
Yeah.
And if it's not gonna perform, then I think maybe, you know, that we should just keep in mind that it may not be all it's cracked up to be, or maybe it is, I don't know, but like Josh was saying, you know, it's a slippery slope.
The main thing we look at, though, is any of these programs are just tools available?
Yeah, I'm not really familiar with how we, you know, decided on that package. I wasn't around for that, but...
So, in the interest of time...
Yes.
Yes.
All right. All right, so I'm gonna jump in and talk about science. If you remember, our fourth-grade science kneecap representing the learning from kindergarten up through grade four, and this is given in the springtime, so it's through grade four, it's been given right now, actually. We have exceeded where the state average has been historically at this level, been marching along, you know, a really, I don't even know if we have a slight upward trend. The bottom coming up a little, if you look. And so, we overall wanted to, we've been focusing in fourth grade and K-four at just bringing some of those classroom-level best practices piece into the system and implementing them across classrooms. That's been things like, you know, we, how to use science notebooks as a scientist would, some formative assessment probes that are written by Paige Keely, who's done a lot of work at the national level, that look at what students' misconceptions are around different science concepts at the beginning of a unit, so you know where to target your energy. And so, you know, we've done a lot of that work and seen, you know, some solid and slightly upward results. We're rolling into implementing now the next-gen science standards. Big shift, but we have, at the K-four level, quite a number of Vermont Science Initiative graduates, people that have been involved with them at almost all levels now. Not every teacher yet because we've been focusing so heavily on math and in other areas, but we're continuing each year to get a couple more teachers to have that training and move forward. So, eighth grade, as you know, we've been really heavily focusing on the fifth through eighth-grade science program over the course of the last three, well, actually, four years because they're taking this year's test right now. We are, we're pleased with what we're seeing. We're headed in the right direction. We started with every single middle-school science teacher taking some coursework with the Vermont Science Initiative, which was fantastic. We continue just to move forward with a lot of the updated resources, more money for supplies that the boards authorized, updated the science lab, and most recently, the money to hire a science consultant, and we targeted the fifth through eighth grade. And this was our first year having that. We did an embedded professional development model, and we will continue that work next year. What they did, it was a combination of the consultant observing classrooms and giving feedback to teachers and planning with teachers based on the next-gen science standards. So, we did a little bit of both, and we'll continue to work with the same consultant and move forward. She'll continue next year focusing in on middle school. Our K-to-four teachers, because they're generalists, are juggling a lot of different professional development, and most of the science teachers in middle school are specialized to one or two content areas, so they're, they have a little more capacity to take something on as a heavy focus right now. So, we'll continue with that and continue with that embedded model. She'll come probably four times next year. She was here three times this year for about three or four days at a time. And I think those are most of the steps. Oh, and the curriculum alignment pieces, which we've worked on, but now we're, are continuing to work on at the CSSU level with the new standards because it's a whole new, you know, it's a whole new reorganization of the science curriculum. Kevin?
It would be interesting to know how many of your students are, you know, from that nearly proficient to proficient, how close they are to popping over. Because I think your success, at least in this measurement, really is getting that 47%
Yeah.
up, right? I mean, that's...
It's, I mean, we have that data. We look, we look at all the release tasks when they come out, we look at the kids that are close. I didn't, I mean, I didn't...
I mean, you know, it's...
Yeah, but you're right.
That's a numbers game in a sense, but if you just look at it over time, you know, you've got that, you've got a lot of kids in nearly.
Right, so it should be the group we can really go after and boost.
Yeah, right.
And we, and we continue to do things such as when we do summer services in literacy...
Because it seems like you're trending good, you know, when you're, you know, when you're non-proficient, so, yeah.
Yeah. So, it's every way we can embed more science in. I mean, we brought so much more, so many more informational science texts into every classroom for reading. When we do summer skills now, if it's a literacy-based, we ground it in science. So, they're learning their literacy through the science concepts that they're going to see and experience in the next year's curriculum. So, there's a lot of ways that we're trying to just continue to bring that emphasis into the classroom of science. So, but overall, we're pleased with what we're seeing. We have a lot more work to do, but we are pleased with the direction we're going. I think I've already talked about this slide and what we're doing. And so, yeah, I mean, I've talked about this, too. These are all the things we continue to work with Vermont Science Initiative, Implement Best Practices, which is the formative assessments, the science notebooks, how to conduct scientists' meetings, inquiry tests, which Molly talked about, which is, you know, how to set up and run experiments and analyze results and all those things that scientists do. The next-gen science standards are, you know, they're on, they're on deck for next year. Heavy emphasis on engineering, which is why our middle-school science fair changed to an engineering challenge this year was a great, huge success. Huge, huge success.
That's good feedback.
And it's funny, a group of us went to the, to the National Science Conference in Boston last month, and it was exactly things like that that were being featured at the conference, those things that kids were able to do and that were engineering-based, where they have to design, engineer, try something out, revisit their design, tweak it, and so forth. And then, tons of nonfiction texts in the science classroom, which our teachers are becoming much, much, much more comfortable with just embedding as science teachers. So, overall, science, I mean, the focus is totally, it really has paid off. We're happy with the direction we're moving, and we'll continue our efforts there. Do we want, do we want to do this last piece, or I don't know how much time?
I think we're moving.
Yeah, I am, too, so...
Then, we won't do this last piece. We were gonna close with this little thing that we, we intentionally teach close reading strategies, and we were gonna have you look at this, two different documents on assessment. And we were gonna have you read it slowly twice, get the gist of what it's about, circle words you weren't sure of, read, annotate, and underline key vocabulary, maybe jot down some questions you might have, talk to each other about what you think it means, and then, we were gonna ask you to come up with some ahas or questions.
But that can be your homework now.
That's your homework. Just so that you're aware that this, this is what we are intentionally, this, you know, Jackie was just talking about using science texts, you know, the nonfiction texts in science, is what we do.
And I think we all want to also just offer up that if you have questions about data to just email us or let us know, so like, if there's something, like, if you want to see the grade level scores in math, you know, I can email those to you or whatever. So, if things come up after the fact that you're like, oh, I didn't ask about this, or I guess I don't really understand that, please feel free to ask us individually about those things.
Jackie, I've just got a couple bigger...
Yes.
So, kneecaps, so, do we have one more year of kneecaps, or we're done?
Kneecaps are done, we'll get one set of scores back.
So, so these, yeah, so we'll get one set of scores back.
No, we're done. We'll get the science scores back.
We won't get...
It's all outstanding.
Math and, yeah, math and reading and writing are done, we have those scores.
So, do we...
What are we gonna do next year?
Yeah, so do we start us back next year?
Next spring, yes. And it all moves to the spring.
And it all moves to the spring.
So, it's not a fall for some and spring for the other, it's all spring.
So, in a sense, this is the last snapshot we're gonna have of trends for a while.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, except for this next, this science that we'll get in, which will actually be nice to see, but...
Yeah, it's really good that that one's coming.
Yeah, and I think some of the shift will be towards looking more at local assessment data, so looking at what teachers are teaching and the assessments they're using to determine whether kids are meeting those standards, which are based on Common Core standards. So, they, we'll sort of have to shift towards looking more closely at that.
So, our data teams will be even more important to be...
Yeah.
But even once we get S-Back results, it'll be hard to compare S-Back to meet up because it's a totally different construct and different time of year and all that.
It's a far more rigorous assessment. I can tell you right now, one of my daughters is in a school that's piloting it, and she's like, oh, my goodness.
Well, you know, in other states where they've been doing it, there's been a lot of, you know...
So, there's gonna be a learning curve, but ultimately, it's going to increase the rigor and education of our support.
Oh, yeah.
So, ultimately, you know, it's, it's gonna be what it'll be for a few years, but where it's headed and the goal is a good goal, so...
So, what does S-Back?
It's smarter balance assessment consortium. Do you want me to send you the link?
Yeah.
So, there's two, and this is now, you know, there's only two national assessments to pick from. This is one of the two.
Actually, their website is pretty good, and they do have, like, you can do practice tests, you can see what they actually look like, and they tell you the grade level.
Yeah, we'll have to see it.
Yeah, so it's...
Yeah, our teachers have gone on and done the practice test and...
Does everybody want to see that?
Yeah, it's, it's a lot more rigorous, so...
Yeah, just throw it out to the board, you know, it'd be great.
A lot of it's online, too. Third-grade kids are gonna have to compose.
Right, so there's the whole technology skill aspect of it, it's gonna be...
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for letting us...
Taking us through it, we appreciate it.
Take a lot of time, sorry.
It's okay, it was worth it, you know, we...
But do emails if there's other things that we can answer.
The one thing I'd say in this last session, we put in our own mail, you know, our two groups are identified for as IEP students in SES, and our IEP students outscored the state in every, in all of our sister schools in every single subject at every single grade level. That's why they were recognized.
Yes, so...
And so, they're making progress. They're definitely moving ahead.
Even in math, if we lost that slide, there was a hundred percent increase in the IEP students that are grade...
That's just great.
And the other thing we look at, though, is, as Kevin was pointing out, our goal is a hundred percent. You know, I mean, that's always going to be goal, that every student is learning in every single area. You know, it's not a straight line where it's easy to do, but that's kind of what, that's our goal.
One of the shifts that Sback is going to make, too, is looking at student, just student progress and not necessarily, did they make it into a different band, but did they make it, did that child actually progress as an individual? Because I think that's the missing piece with some of this data, is like, you can't tell. If the kid doesn't get into the next band, you don't know if he increased or not.
Right, right, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, said Kevin. Kevin, the other chair.
Great, so let's continue, and then we'll move into section five, reports to the board. So, I'll start with Walter and the principal's report.
So, the, I'm going to, just because of time, I'm going to highlight a couple of things I think we should see. There is a page in here of all our retirements or people that are resigning. And if you look at that list, it's pretty amazing. It's Carol Bick, Betty Perot, I mean, the years of experience they have, Terry Thing, Anne McNeet, Kermit Leclair, and I'll read his letter, the head of the custodians. Sid Goss is moving. And Helen Decter, Elizabeth Percy, and Patty Greenfield. So, I just want to read Kermit's letter. Dear School Board, it is with great sadness I submit this letter to you. I have worked for the Williston School District for twenty-six years as head of maintenance and grounds. Effective June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, I plan on retiring from my position. It has been a wonderful twenty-six years, and I feel that I have given my all to the school district over that time. I have enjoyed working with the faculty, staff, students, and community as a whole. I wish the school district the best of luck in the future, and I thank you for the opportunity to serve and be part of this wonderful community. Respectfully submitted, Kermit Leclair. So, anyway, I just wanted to...
Thank you for sharing.
Point that out. The only other thing is the end of the principal's report, if you didn't recognize it, because it wasn't labeled, it was from part two.
Yes, I noticed that.
That was from part two.
But it wasn't labeled.
No, it wasn't labeled, but it, that's a part two, how did the year go message to... So, and there were some things to point out, but I think, unless you have specific questions, I can show you a couple of things that you should look at.
Quick question on part two, it's a technical one on finances. Constituent had asked me whether or not the part two financing for our school, my understanding is it goes through the CSSU.
Right.
Is it segregated? Do our costs and expenses are looked at?
No, they pay, they pay Williston a building rental fee, the negotiated amount. We, all the expenses are pooled together, and that's one of the expenses in their budget, offset by their revenue.
And I could highlight one, there's a couple of things in here.
Take a few minutes.
So, success highlights, and this is one of the things we wanted to do. Part two collaboration with the Spark enrichment program allows our fifth through eighth grade students population a greater opportunity to take part in both incredible programs. In the last section of Spark, which is, this is our last cycle, there are five, six cycles a year, part two is teaching its own section on outdoor ventures that Spark kids could sign up for. So, now they're both offering options, and you could go either way. And that's what we're looking for. And then the other part is it talks about its connection to school and that we created a faculty-staff newsletter, which informs the faculty and staff of our program. In the newsletter, we asked for feedback on connecting the school day with part two. We received numerous responses, which we embraced when building our curriculum. Some examples are, talks about Ms. Baker's art classes learned about Vermont birds, Swift House Science Section on the human body. Ms. Ward offered us many ideas on theme weeks as examples. And then the other thing we said we wanted to look at is clubs. And there's a list of clubs here of what they created in part two that students can choose to be in, such as iPad photography, building club, engineering, international cooking sports club, creative writing, part two news club, dance club, homework club, world traveler club, and comic book club. And those are two high-interest kinds of things that are still school-oriented. So, those are some of the highlights, and that's kind of designed when we wanted them to come in. That's what we wanted to happen, that there's really another backup of help for kids and a learning opportunity in part two.
Excellent, thank you. Great. Third quarter financial management report was in your stuff. CSSU debrief, real quick, there was a few things discussed I think I should share. You may or may not be aware of. So, we talked about a few things. One thing, in the Culp report, it was asked, and the Culp team will be providing us a, I call that a procedure, I don't know if that's the best way to put it, for informing boards of any pending legal issues. Is that a good, best way to put it?
Sure.
Yeah, so, there was a question that came up about informing boards, you know, if there's anything going on in the school districts from a legal standpoint that they need to be aware of, and so you guys are going to work out some processes so that we can be appropriately in the loop.
The good news is rarely there's a time when you're not being a quasi-judicial board, but on the occasion...
On the occasion, there is.
Yeah.
Is there a timetable on when that may occur?
We haven't set one per se, but I imagine we'd be targeting the board retreat to at least have that available to you. But I know your other question, we probably should, I think Lotta could give you some information in executive session if you wanted to tonight.
Let's, we can do that. We have, we're going into executive session, so we can, we can do that. Just a couple of other things to mention, if you weren't aware. Legislatively, the consolidation bill did not, I don't know if pass is the right word, it didn't even get to a point... Yeah, died in session. So, we won't be considering the potential impacts for that this year. I suspect that discussion is far from over. And then the other thing that's important to know is that there was a, there was legislation passed where, starting July of two thousand fifteen?
We think.
We think. Every, every new teacher that we hire, we will be paying into the retirement system a thousand dollars per year per teacher.
We will?
In perpetuity.
And it's an unfunded mandate.
An unfunded mandate. So, if, the, the thinking was, slash is, is that as you retire teachers, you're going to be hiring teachers at a less, lesser rate, and they, that, because the retirement and health system is underfunded for teachers, this is how they're going to start to make up for it. So, they're going to have school systems pay a thousand dollars per teacher, per year for those new teachers. Eventually, that's going to add up to be your entire staff.
Effective when?
July two thousand fifteen, we think, yeah.
We, we should be able to budget for it during the next budget cycle theoretically.
In the short term, it won't, I don't think it's going to affect us because we are going to probably be seeing more retirements in the next year or two, just because of some other things that are running on the retirement system. Teachers have an opportunity to, to take a better retirement if they choose. So, we will be replacing retiring teachers, but over time...
Potentially, it could cost CSSU four hundred thousand dollars a year.
So, just wanted to be the very good...
Better invest in a Roth because those taxes are never going to go down.
That's right. That's, those are my major takeaways from the CSSU. Anyone else?
Uh, let's see, what about the VSBA dates?
Oh, well, we're getting to that interaction, right? Is it under action or discussion? You mean, how about discussion?
Discussion, sorry.
Yeah, we do, so we're good.
Okay. Sorry.
It's okay.
FAP?
Yep, that's...
Okay, Sarah Forbes is a community member and a parent, and she did a great new logo. You don't have it, do you, Lotta? It was really exciting. At the last FAP meeting, she unveiled three choices, all similar colored patterns, and it just, it looks really great. And it was unanimous. We voted on it and picked one.
And what is it?
Um, it's a new logo for FAP, just updated. So, it's colorful, her color choices are great, so it's, it's just really fun. So, thank you to Sarah. Walter did a great activity, I just wanted to mention this. He, we had the FAP work together in groups and talk about what schools should look like in the future and how we're going to move our schools forward. And I've been sitting on that board for a long time, and we've talked about all kinds of small issues. And this was the first time I kind of left there going, there are so many common threads in terms of where we all want the schools to go. So, it was a really great discussion, lots of common ideas, and, you know, things that we've talked about, like extending the school day and, you know, just, it was, it felt really good that we're at that point, that we're talking about the big pictures.
So, was there anything taken away from that, like a...
Yeah, we've got a good list, right?
We have a list. What we did is we ran, because we had the technology report, we ran a very similar activity with twenty of our top tech teachers, the coordinators, administrators, and when you cross the lists, they're almost identical. And so, it really deals with a flexible scheduling of school, you know, making sure we have time in the summer, you know, a lot of different ideas. What we're going to do is we're going to meld the two together, and we look at action planning and planning for the future. We want to include them, so that we're, we're moving towards that. So, what would be first steps in looking at this vision for school? I think Elaine has talked about she might run the board chairs through the same kind of activity because what we started with is the statement that, that people are going to be asked to do jobs that don't even exist today. You know, that's how things are changing, and using technology that hasn't even been invented. And not only that, they're going to be changing the jobs probably five or ten times during their lifetime. So, if that's what it's going to look like, how do we prepare our students for that? And that's what drove the discussion about, well, what about the day? What about the building, you know, all kinds of, what does the classes look like? Are we still grouping the same way? You know, things like that. So, that's kind of what the impetus was, to drive people to think differently. Because if you say, and I think we're doing great today, because the other thing is that the system of school today was invented in eighteen ninety-two by ten college presidents. That's where it started. And the industrial revolution is kind of what it was off of. And what it said is, as long as twenty-five percent of our kids graduate from college, we'll be fine as a country because seventy-five percent will be working in the factories that no longer exist. And that's why the model doesn't work well anymore. We can't afford not to have more of our students attending college and working at very high levels and having jobs for them. So, that's what drove some of the discussion also.
So, do you think maybe we should incorporate that in our strategic planning day?
Well, I guess the reason I was asking is, is that at some point, I would love to see the output of that. That sounds like it was a, a great exercise.
And we can show you that because we have all the notes from the parents. We have, and we're working on finalizing the notes from the, the staff members to say what did they think? And also prioritizing. So, you can see the big list, and then you can see, when you start prioritizing, say, what really makes a difference? Then you can see how it shrunk down. But there's a lot of, and the board has talked about it, more flexible school day, more flexible school year. I mean, it's, it's not things that we haven't discussed before.
And movement for students between classes, you know, not holding kids to seat time. So, it was, it was really a great...
Project-based learning, you know, integrated learning, real-world problems that they're solving.
Okay, sounds great.
That was good. So, thanks for doing that. Let's see, I want to thank all the businesses and parents that have contributed to the Big Basket Raffle because that brought in nine thousand seven hundred dollars. And that goes to, you know, support our schools to give additional resources. So, that's huge, that's great. Lastly, so they're working on, they had a staff breakfast on Tuesday, and dessert day is on Friday. And then Williston runs, the fun run in honor of Steve Mount is on Saturday, five fifteen. So, great things going on.
Good, and as, okay, we'll get that later. Good. Great, let's move on to discussion matters then. So, let's start with six dot one, input on carousel meeting schedule for, for next year, two thousand fourteen, fifteen. So, the, this subject has come up because a, as a, as a CSSU board and as our constituent boards, we're, we just happen to have been meeting for the same, for years, on the second Wednesday of the month. And it conflicts with when the, the VSB, the VSBA board meets. They meet on the second Wednesday of every month, too, and they have regional meetings and they have state meetings. And because of that, we have traditionally not had, not participated in that discussion, you know, at the, at the state, regional and state level. And, you know, this has kind of come up as a, as kind of a strategic discussion at the CSSU level. You know, we think we need to step up and do something about that and have some representation there, even if it means, you know, just participating, not necessarily, you know, I mean, it would be great if, if, if we have some board members who have interest to go, you know, run for positions on that board and make, you know, make it a change in that direction. But we're not even, you know, going to the meetings and sitting and, and listening and understanding what, you know, what's going on there. So, the only way to do that is to have a discussion about changing when we do our carousel meetings. And so, it's been proposed that we discuss this here and see if it's possible that we could change the dates to the second or third Tuesday or second, or third Wednesday.
Those are the options.
Those are the options, right?
You're already on the second Wednesday.
Right, so how's that, yeah, those, oh, I, I get it. These are the only ones that work, so to speak, in, in like the greater scheme. So, the second Wednesday obviously is, works because it's working. So, the question really to all of you is, do you have any personal reasons that would precede you from being able to come to those meetings on those dates here for, you know...
Makes no difference to me.
For our own meetings?
Makes absolutely no difference. I'm good with any of them.
Because if you do, that's, that's, that's a big problem, not a big problem, but we, you know, it's, it's, it's more important that we are all here as a board than broken up.
Yeah, we can't put anybody in a position where they can't make it because we've had it traditionally on Tuesdays, so...
Third Wednesdays could be a problem for me.
Okay.
So, scratch that one.
From the, from the administrators, if I can speak immediately.
Yeah.
Tuesday are always faculty meeting days, and it's every single Tuesday, pretty much throughout the whole year. And they run a minimum of two, four fifteen.
Second Wednesday?
The second Wednesday is what we're doing now. The second Wednesday is our conflict.
Tonight.
Like I said, it just gets on the calendar.
I mean, I, I could have a discussion with my conflict to see whether...
You can do some conflict resolution. Attempt.
At this point, my responsibility is to report back, you know, what's the most comfortable times for our board. So, I will, I'll report back that the second or third Tuesday has the least amount of conflicts for us. And I will note that, you know, the administration is concerned because those are also your faculty meetings. Okay?
Good.
Faculty meetings are after school, after sunset.
Right, got it. Okay, so that takes us on to six dot two, retreats. So, in your packet was a, a proposed agenda for the retreats. It's already getting tweaked a little bit. From, I think from our context, we want to have a kind of a discussion about, as a board, what we're expecting to, to discuss during our portion of the retreat.
And what Elaine has down, based on input from the administration and her own observations and discussions, is that the focus of your local board discussion would be on enrollment projections and budget impact? That's what she's picked up.
I would have to agree.
And that would be her suggestion.
I would have to agree.
She, and she'd also, they're not, she's not really looking for you to generate a list because there really isn't enough time for you to tackle everything you want to talk about. So, this is her recommendation. Totally up to you if that's not what you want to spend your time on.
Will we talk about that tonight? Because I know the last meeting, we talked about the fact that the projections were coming above, um, projections.
They're up higher than we thought in kindergarten.
Has it changed, higher even more?
No, it's staying the same right now. It's staying the same. It's right about one, it's about ninety-two, it's twelve students higher than is projected by Bill Smith.
Yeah, what we, what we did...
Yep, okay. What other issues do you guys? Realistically, I think we, we have time to discuss, seriously discuss two or three, max. So, we've just, I know we've discussed things in the past throughout our meetings. Instead of putting you on the spot right now, unless somebody's got something, which would be great, I think I'm going to project with email over the next couple of days and see if I can... I, I need to go back and look at my notes quite honestly. I didn't have time to do this today to suggest some things. Because I know that we had some discussions about some things we wanted to talk about at retreat. But I want to narrow it down quickly because it's rolling up on us fast. So, we don't, you know, so we can focus.
All right.
Okay?
And I assume that, that's open to the administration, too?
Yeah, oh, please, yeah, absolutely.
That we should be.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Communications and board's corners, if we got anything, we, we're kind of rolling out to the end of the year here. Anybody jumping up to have anything that we need to talk to the community about?
We appreciate the ongoing community support for our schools, thank you.
The only thing that comes to mind that, and, and maybe this is just a, we can do this in another matter, is we have a lot of faculty and staff that are, that are leaving us this year. And I wonder if it wouldn't be nice to do a board's corner. I don't know, we've never, I don't know if we've ever done that in the past.
Thanking them for their...
Yeah, I'm just throwing it as an idea, I'm not, I don't know what you guys think, you know?
You know what you're doing every day.
Well, yeah, exactly, we start this, we've, we kind of got to keep it up.
I think it's a good idea, yeah.
It shows an appreciation, respect for the faculty and the hard work that they do, so I like that idea.
And also notifies the community who may not know.
And also notifies the community who may not know.
Right.
Well, that's right. Yeah. Um, so, well, I threw it out there. I'll take it this time.
Nice.
Thank you.
So Walter, I'll just, I'll just touch base with you, make sure I cover.
I wonder even if the Williston observer would be interested in doing something.
Well, I'll give them a call.
Their pictures up and they say, because they've done it in the past. For some reason, I seem to.
It's now all public and everything. It's all, at that point of the year, so.
Yeah.
Well, then I'll give them a call tomorrow and.
You can pass it on.
Yeah. See if they're interested. Great. Okay, so let's move on to action matters now. We, we pulled personnel out of consent, so we deal with it at the end of this list. Uh, so seven dot one, adopt the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen school year calendar. Should have been in your packet. Can I have a motion?
So motion that we accept the two thousand fourteen, fifteen calendars submitted.
I, I just have one question though.
Second it, maybe.
Oh, second, sorry. I second it. I still get confused with this problem.
Discussion, please.
Yeah, so, uh, what, is there anything different from what we've seen in the prior versions? Is a question.
No, there's nothing different except for the labeling under January second. You may have a copy that says that's no school that day, but it's been corrected to say professional development day, no students. But it, it's not a change in the schedule. It's just a clarification.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passes. Uh, okay, uh, seven dot two, approval of resolution for the bond project. May I have a motion? So moved will do.
So moved.
A second? Great. Um, so, catch me if I'm wrong here, folks, but this is pretty straightforward, right? This is, you know, this is our approval to take the, the bond funds that were voted and apply them as. Yeah, for the projects that we said we would, and we're about to hit those next here.
Is there any estimate of what the yield on those bonds are going to be? Does anyone have an idea what the market rate is?
I've managed to avoid that so far.
We'll know soon, I guess.
So, just a question here, Walter. Uh, I don't, I, I don't see called out specifically the, uh, any contract for roofing. Do we not have one to approve yet?
What they did is they, they, I think what they did is, because I looked it over, they combined both of them on, because one forty is the total.
Yeah, right.
So what they're, I think, if you read the first part of it, it's mentioning, um, kind of building projects in general.
Yeah, right, right. I saw that.
It doesn't say in this, um, general obligation of bonds and, um, not to exceed a hundred to pay costs of the same. And I think it's, it's speaking about general repairs to the school rather than saying it's forty thousand dollars for a roof and it's a hundred thousand dollars for paving. It's basically just saying you're borrowing a hundred and forty thousand dollars for school projects.
Okay, I got it. I got it. And so.
Right, and once we approve that, then we can award a paving contract.
Yes.
We have monies to spend on that. And so then my quest, my, really, I guess my question from there on is, we do not have a, uh, we do not have a bid accepted yet for the roofing work?
General repair.
No, I think, I know that they've been contacting people and looking for bids, but they haven't finished that part yet.
Okay.
They had finished the paving.
And, and will we need to convene separately, you know, as a, as a board to approve that?
You have your June business meeting?
That's true, we do.
And we should have information by then.
Very good. So that's the end of my discussion on this. Any other discussion? All in favor of approval of the resolution for the bond project?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seven dot three, awarding the two thousand fourteen, fifteen paving contract. Can I have a motion to award?
So moved.
A second, please.
I'll second.
Discussion.
So, if I'm looking at this right, this is a joint bid with the town?
That's correct.
And our portion is seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and forty dollars?
Okay, that's a really strong bid. And I think it's because it's a bigger volume when we go with the town. They get a better rate than we do.
Right, right. That's really great.
And this is for paving?
Both parking lots at both buildings.
Both, oh, that's wonderful. I thought it was just one.
It's both.
Really strong bid.
Yeah.
Uh, when's projections to begin?
Um, they'll be done by the end of the summer, I'm sure. That's what I was hoping.
Bunch of tough bus drop-offs if they're not.
There's gonna be a lot of paving this summer in general, looking at roads.
Yeah.
It's a mess.
Uh, okay, any other discussion on the contract? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, that passes. Great. Um, seven dot four, it's that time of year. Can I have a motion to authorize, uh, the board chair to have signature authority for summer action?
So moved.
Can't talk about it if you don't second it.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Theoretically, I, it's not you. I trust you implicitly. But I have a problem, um, generic, here, as a matter of process. Uh, we are supposed to act collectively. Um, we're elected to do that, to defer all decisions to the chair. I think, I, I'm not always a hundred percent comfortable with that delegation as a process.
Do recall though that anything I sign over the summer comes to everybody in September for final approval. That's the only check of balance we've got. So.
But if you approve something, say, i- is anything that has been approved taken into action, that even though it has to be finally approved?
Well, this, this is really specifically for contract signing, right?
Mostly it's new hires. There's some other little things, but I can't think of what they might be right now. Occasionally.
Mostly? New hires.
It's mostly hires because of the timing. It's, it's competitive.
Yeah, right, because contracts are, you know, everything starts June thirtieth, right, July fifteenth?
Would it, would, would it suffice us as a suggestion, I mean, knowing it's a summer and most of us will maybe be on and off from vacation? If there is something that you consider that.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Right now, you don't have any teacher vacancies, so the likelihood of you even needing to do anything is pretty low right now.
That's a good point.
But if we get a surprise resignation.
It's only the nurse one that you're gonna work, act on, um, something requested here, but even things, if that's the only position I think that's left open, that's a, actually a teaching position, that we'd need a board signature on.
Okay.
That's it.
So, what if, just as a suggestion, what if the authorities granted for purposes of effectuating personnel contracts in any matter, twenty-five thousand dollars or less? And if there's anything greater than twenty-five thousand dollars, you will provide notice to the board members, uh, in advance. So if there's an issue, it can be, you know, we'll have notice.
So if I'm hearing your amendment, so that Sandy understands my notes in the morning, you're saying authorize signature authority for the board for summer actions on personnel contracts and financial matters up to twenty-five thousand? Or are you saying?
Personnel matters and con, and other contracts for twenty-five thousand dollars or less.
I actually have no problem with it because there is a scenario where we could be awarding roofing contract remotely, you know, that is not done by the June business meeting. Yeah, and I'd want to convene for that.
Right, I mean, that's what I figured. If it's a big number, you're gonna want to convene.
Yeah, right. I mean, we do have the situation where we have an outstanding roofing contract we're gonna need to approve, so.
Right.
So I'm personally, I'm fine with the amendment as, as a suggestion.
If you want to put a number on it?
Yeah. So, uh, what's Robert's rules here, do we?
Deb accepts, does Deb accept Josh's friendly amendment and Josh has to accept his own amendment?
Right. Any further discussion on the motion as amended?
Uh, you actually don't have to vote, yeah, you can say it that way. It's fine.
Is that getting through?
You're not voting on the amendment. As long as everybody's clear, you're voting on the motion, we're good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So noted. So you have, you did have one opposition vote, Mr. Proctor?
Oh, thank you. Sorry, I'm trying to get the motion. Four one then, or did you vote?
I did not.
Okay.
Okay, um, uh, what we're going to do is, um, action seven five, we're going to take into executive session as personnel. Uh, and we will come out of executive session, make a motion, and vote on it, okay? Uh, so that takes us to, uh, what is now seven dot six, which was eight dot four personnel. Um.
I, I just never received the materials in the, in the package. I downloaded the, the big package and none of those materials were there, so I, I don't know. I don't have the information to make a decision, so it's like, it's hoping sent to be approved.
Pass those to Josh.
Oh, because they were sent.
Oh, there was one that was sent after. There was, there was an addendum, yeah. Yep, I do remember that. Here you go. Take a look. Yeah, notes.
So, I thought there's, um, aren't there two teaching positions?
Yes.
That we're discussing?
Yes.
Is one of them gonna be in executive session? Because all, I, what I've got here is two extension requests and one hire.
Is it a back-to-back on the hire?
No.
There should be one, two.
Oh, I have two. Susan and Peter Lake. Susan Stewart, Peter Lake.
So I have, um, Susan Stewart, but not Peter Lakes.
It's on the back of.
On the back of one of the other pages, ma'am? On the back.
Yes, sorry.
Of the, um, Carla Kennedy's request for an extension.
Can you just give me a quick, down and dirty, you know, what, what was the hiring pool like?
On these two?
Yeah, what due diligence did the school do to?
Peter Lake in particular, um, you receive, in the, in the year that we had to go back to the budget, you received letters from those parents saying, whatever you do, don't cut Peter Lake. He's a wonderful teacher. He's teaching in looping class in second grade at ABS. So, he already knows the system. We had gone through an extensive, you know, process before just to find him. He came all the way from Washington. And. Yeah, he's taught for.
This would be the end of his second year, actually.
So he's been with us and he's a proven commodity. People really like him. Um, you know, he's respected by his peers. And we already had kind of vetted him two years ago to find him. Susan Stewart, um, we have a person, Lindsay Blox, who's going on leave. Susan Stewart was probably one of the most outstanding teachers that Williston ever had. Top ten. And basically, um, she is taking a year's leave of absence for her current job. This is a year leave for the person here. She, um, she's in the, she's probably one of the top ten teachers I've ever met. She is, um, if she gets this position, one of the people on the team is her former teammate. She already knows the system. She knows how we work. She's familiar with everybody in the system. So she could hit the ground running. And she's a certified administrator. So that means. Pardon?
She's taking a leave from Moncton.
Of Moncton. She would come in, the, the advantage to us is we have a certified administrator. If the administrators have to go to a meeting, we have coverage in the building by a certified administrator, which is an added bonus.
Yeah.
And we don't have that right now. We've had it in the past, especially at ABS, which is our biggest school, I mean WCS, we don't have it. You know, when Eric Arnsen was there, he was a certified administrator. So it gives us another resource to use. And she's fantastic. There's no question about it.
Do you support the pair one? Did you speak to them?
Yeah.
The FMLA need was just a fifteen-day.
Uh, no, it's like, um.
Carla Kennedy?
It's.
She'd be done on October thirtieth. I think they'll even come back on.
Yeah, so it's really giving her basically the months of November and December as unpaid leave. Her FMLA will take her to October.
Okay.
Okay. And.
Works for the administration.
The other ones that you have, um, your time goes back to back. Uh, you have a request from Helen Dectar that's asking for leave of absence for a year. And there's a letter and it explains, I will be leaving with my family from North Carolina in late July, early August of two thousand fourteen. We're going to be with a family who is in great need of, um, our help. She has not sold her house. She has a conflict. She hasn't sold it.
So she's.
I think she's.
So her intentions are, are.
I, I would say, I would say from that, their intentions are returning at this point because she didn't sell her house. And she doesn't know kind of what's gonna, what's gonna happen.
Okay.
And then the last one we have is from Susan Leister, who is on, you know, pretty much leave right now and working at a, a minimum within the schools. And what we do is when she works, somebody else does it. We just switch the hours. And, you know, this is due to a, a, a physical condition she has. And what it does is it, she's really great. She's a certified school nurse and she's really gated great at the bookkeeping and keeping our records up to date and all the technology part of, um, the nurse's office. So it's kind of worked out that, um, they like the fact that one person steps down about the four hours that she works and she works four hours. So they just kind of trade it off. And we'd like to do that for basically, I think we talked about one more year in this.
If you want more information, we'd have to go into executive session.
We'd have to go into executive session. But we would support it for this one more year.
I, I guess I do have a question that I'd like to raise in executive session, so, but otherwise I have no problems with you either.
Yep.
On this particular one? On the last one we talked about?
Yeah.
Okay. So what we'll do is we will come out and make a motion on this also.
Yep.
And we'll just do it as a package. All right? So, uh, I think that brings us through to director's comments.
Uh, you have to take action on those items. Please.
Oh, yeah, the consent thing. Yeah, that'd be good to do, wouldn't it?
Well, and these aren't really in consent anymore, so technically you need to.
No, no, so, no, I just said we, we, we go into executive and come out on those, so now we're at consent. Gonna do them all at once.
All right.
So we'll do eight dot four, which is now seven dot six. When I do seven dot six, uh, we'll come out and take action on the entire package.
Okay.
Okay? So then that gets us to the consent agenda, which I really did want to blow right by, uh, which would not be wise. So, uh, can I have a motion, uh, to accept the consent agenda, um, with the exception of eight dot four?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, uh, director's comments. Do we have any?
I do have one comment. With regards to roofing. So the roofing project that we have, that we got voted on or whatever, um, is for Allenbrook, right? For one of the wings? So I just have a question. So Equinox, one morning I walk in and the classroom is like draining. It's like raining in the classroom. And from what I heard, this happens every year when there's de-icing.
That's, um, a matter of.
Raining inside.
Ice buildup. And the real solution to that is added insulation in the, above that classroom, so there's less heat loss. It's not, it doesn't really do with the roof. You're getting, in other words, you can have a high, um, ice dam on your roof at home. And the problem is gonna be you're leaking heat someplace probably, and that's why the, the snow is melting on the roof.
And so what are we doing about it?
Well, what we do is we would insulate. It's not a roofing problem per se. That's a very new roof and it's still under, um, probably warranty because it's, it's a metal roof.
No, I know, but if, if.
So we're going to insulate up above in that area of the building. We really have to insulate up above.
Okay, and we have the funds in, in.
Well, we're, in the last meeting, we have about a hundred and, I think you saw on here, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in the construction fund that the board can decide on, how would you like to use this money? And what we can do is bring in some suggestions and say, here's some things to consider. One can be an insulation.
Yeah.
And say, if we want to take care of this problem, it'll cost X amount of dollars.
And just so you guys know what happened, the classroom had to be evacuated for the entire day or two until it actually dried up. until it actually dried up, so they were actually having their classroom time in the dining room, so I think that's a big problem.
And the, the, just the technical part, it needs to be a roof. Um, you have an ice dam at the bottom where the kids get let out through the doors, you know, they go... Well, what happens is that ice dam builds up the ice on the roof, which causes, then it starts leaking, so, I mean, it literally creates the dam by itself, but that's to stop the ice from sliding off all at once and landing on the students.
Right.
Yeah, it's a catch twenty-two.
It's a catch twenty-two, and what's exasperating it, though, is because you need more insulation.
Okay.
That's all.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we keep that in mind, because it is something that needs to be solved, because it's a recurrent issue.
Before the season occurs again.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, uh, anyone else?
I just have one quick thing, um, last Thursday, Nancy Carlson, um, had the school social worker come in with another social worker from the Howard Center to have a discussion about poverty with the mentors, and it was really, it was just amazing, we talked about the effects of poverty, and then we did some group work about, um, you know, how to support kids, and what, what's amazing to me is just the range of ages of our mentors and bringing, um, people into the schools that have different expertise, and, and that's volunteer, that's an hour a week, so it's a great...
It's nice.
It's a great thing, but important work.
That's, that's great. Uh, a couple of comments from myself, um, don't forget this Friday morning is our teacher appreciation breakfast. Giovanna has volunteered to pick up the bagels and get them dropped off for us.
Speaking of which, so, I assume the schools are open by seven?
Pardon?
The schools are open by seven for me to drop...
They're open by six.
Okay, so where do I put them?
In, in the dining room, when you come in.
In, in Williston Center?
In ABS.
ABS?
In the, uh...
Conference room.
Conference room inside the main office? Okay, thank you. And I just put them there?
You hang out.
No, I'm not, I can't stay.
So I can, I can go to one of the schools, if anyone else is available.
Yeah, I can go to Williston.
I can go to ABS, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, I play it by ear, I'd like to go, but I don't.
That's where I get the bagels from.
We got extra...
We don't have many options.
Okay, so there's director's comments, so, uh, um...
Now are we offering coffee, sorry?
Yeah, we are, I think, I think, yes, I think I asked Walter to, to have the school bring it. The only, oh shoot, now I just lost track of the second thing I wanted to tell you about. Oh, 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 um, um, I think it's appropriate that we put together some handwritten cards for, uh, our retiring teachers, we usually do that, we do a quick thank you, so, um, I, I'll be happy to write them up if some, I'm not really good at picking cards out, so... If any ideas there, I'll, I'll take the other half, if someone can help me find something appropriate.
Yeah.
Great, so I'll, I'll talk to you guys offline about that, thank you. Uh, great, next meeting dates, and then we can get ourselves into executive session. Uh, so, we're back together as, at the annual retreat on the thirtieth. So we will meet in the morning, and then the CSSU board, uh, meets in the afternoon, and you're, uh, always encouraged to stay the day if you have the time, uh, to participate in that also. Um, we also have, um, our June twenty-fifth business meeting, which is back here in, at the CVU, you know, where we usually start the CSSU stuff, at five thirty PM, um, and then, uh, our board chair's meeting for this month is May twentieth at eight AM. So if there are any further questions, uh, I guess I need a motion to go into executive session for reasons of negotiations and personnel.
So moved.
Very good.